HUD updates the numbers, I'm gonna have the development. Because a lot of this is reimbursed by the federal government. So they set it up so that when HUD updates its amounts for each region of the state, each area, you just have to amend the appendices. They're good for a year. So apparently, they have updated appendices A through D and H. Or A through D are housing, food, let's see. The overall maximums, food maximums is B, housing is C, and D is electric bills, both heated and unheated, if you have, you know, electric heat versus non electric heat. Hot water, not heat, hot water. And then on H, I believe H is funeral costs. And they added, they wrote down funeral caskets versus funeral cremation. Two different minimums, two different maximums of the staple paper. So that's what that's all about. And every year, we get to redo them if HUD redoes, you know, the numbers. So they fluctuate pretty much, rents fluctuate. If oil goes up, heating costs will go up for rents. Things like oil, they do that by volume. So for instance, January, February, they allow 225 gallons a month. November, December is 200 gallons. September is like 100. Goes from September to May, different volumes for each month. Those haven't changed in years. So it hasn't changed since I used to do the E-4 back in the early eighties. But the law says if somebody's needy, we have to help them until within these limits.
Within the limits. Any questions from Mark or Ethna, soon to be Linda here at the meeting? Well, there.
We had about the size of it.
Yeah.
Anything from the board?
No, it was a good explanation and Tracy with a nice notes, slight increase. The highlighting helps because it all looks, it's just...
We are very fortunate here in this town. We don't have a lot of unmet needs. Interesting. I've heard that other towns have a huge need.
Now, do they, does the government adjust up according, did you find, according to need, John? Or as far as money?
They adjust up and down.
I mean, as far as money, they've given the town of Mexico X number of dollars this year. It's all gone.
No, it's all based on the help that we give out. So if I give out $200 for food and 300 for rent, the state's gonna reimburse the town 90% of that total cost.
Okay.
So when you add up all the clients, every month you submit a reimbursement, the state gives the towns 90%.
Is there a mandate that it's only, it's only residents?
Yes. Except that, which is, you know, MMA and it's, you know, people like me who had a deal with us for years and said, you know, you gotta change residency for general assistance so that they have to be in the town for at least like three months before they qualify. But no. If I showed up here on, you know, at the counter and said, I need some food, I'm hungry and I plan on being a resident, I'm a resident for purposes of general assistance. If I had, you know, they showed up in my office before and said, you need to find me an apartment. I'd wanna live here. And I'm like, no, 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 no. I don't need to find you an apartment. When you find an apartment, if you're gonna be a resident, you come over and see me. And then we'll see, you know, what your assets are.
And you're in it for three months.
So I had a mother bring in a kid and his girlfriend, you know, 18, on his 18th birthday. Yeah, you need to take care of him now. And I said, no, 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 you don't, you don't understand. State law says you own him until he's 26. She's like, what? Dad!
Read the fine print next time.
Oh, you get, you know, all kinds of people come in with all kinds of situations. But yeah, not many people know that parents are responsible for their children until they're 26 for purposes of GA.
Yeah. Basically, for the rest of their life until they're 26.
But this, well, that's true. That's true. But like overall maximums, right? It broke down with all the, like Bangor area, you know, the western, Harvard, Portland. But the rest of us, like Franklin County, a person in household, $669 a month, which is a lot to look at, you know, but that's, but that's the overall maximum. So if he comes in, he's got nothing. And he's got a, you know, $500 rent that I have to help him with. He's got an eviction notice, that makes it an emergency. And then that leaves me with $169 left to pay for like his electric bills so he doesn't get shut off or a food voucher.
Wow.
And yeah, it's not a lot of money. It's a bare existence, but you get general assistance. On the other hand, if you've got five people in the hollow town of Franklin County, it's $1,468. It's based on like $125 per, please note, add $75 for each additional person in the family. Per month. And it doesn't matter for like personal maximums. Doesn't matter if it's June or February. You're obviously gonna need more fuel. But if they run out and flow zero, it's an emergency. You can ignore all the limit there. You can just like talk to them and say it's an emergency, you can help them with under gallons of fuel.
They've been in the fast lane. Anything else on general assistance?
No.
Okay. Kurt, I know you just joined us in the last section of the public hearing for, this is a public hearing for an adoption of general assistance appendices. And John gave a nice description of what that entails. You have any wants and needs in the general assistance category?
I'm good today.
I hope so. All right. We'll close the public hearing for general assistance. Guys got anything to do for five minutes before we open up the selectmen's meeting?
I'm sorry, I missed my kids' items.
You lost your call from them?
Well, she had her, she had her hardest final today in one of her, I think it was her nursing med surg class, so she was...
Pardon me. If you could join me for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I apologize, folks. Going to be ordered three minutes after. I bet it isn't three minutes after. It's six o'clock on the...
I know, see?
Six o'clock on the job. Any adjustments to the agenda, John?
Just correspondence from the main land use planning commission on an application by Akteris. That comes from the O R three to the purpose of transferring ownership and responsibility regarding all active land use, building, and development purpose. I would like to...
What do you?
And yeah, you can like trust that because they, people have a chance at any spot to comment. And they also have a letter of resignation, resignation. Yeah, or...
Let's put that letter of resignation, we'll deal with that under town manager report number 10. Any suggestions, where you wanna stop this one?
I think he said correspondence.
Yeah, just so people know, if they want to comment on sale, you know, land use regulation commission, they were asking for new business. So they left their address and come up with a new business.
Yep, all right.
Post it on the board.
What'd you say?
Don, you suggested new business.
Yep. Can you hear? Me.
Keep this on it.
Keith, can you turn this thing? Thank you. Review and approve the minutes from December 2nd, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 2nd, 2019.
Second.
With any corrections or additions.
Yep. Anything on the side? Changes? Okay, all favor? Public to speak under non-agenda items. Mark?
Thank you. I was curious if they were written guidelines on what constitutes FOIA request when someone comes into the town office looking for information. I'm not sure of this, but I remembered I, that I thought there was a difference between like a FOIA request and a tax payer request for information, like was discussed at a board selectmen's meeting or something like that. But like I say, I'm not certain, but that's kinda what I think is out there. And I didn't know if you folks don't already have written guidelines from MMA, is someone if you could ask to get a copy of those for that. It's a uniform procedure.
It's the state law. We follow the state law. So everybody has to submit an application and then we have so many days, you have reasonable amount of days to get you the information you want. We charge you, but state law says the employee's labor and trying to put together the information the first hour is free. And then after that, it's so much an hour that we can charge the person making the request.
Up to $15 per hour after the first hour?
Yeah, I mean, it's going up since I first started.
And then for every bit of information?
Everybody...
Okay, so if somebody comes in and wants to volunteer to drive the rack man and they ask for a copy of the policy, they have to fill out a FOIA to get that?
No, they don't.
You have to sign off on the back of the policy. They have to, that's a town policy. It's like any employee that signs off on the code of ethics policy, they need to have a copy of that policy and then they return the signature sheet to me for the...
Right, but to get that policy, do they need to file a FOIA to get a copy of the application to?
No.
It's part of their volunteer. It's, I mean, it's a policy they need to have in opposition because it applies to them directly.
Right. I just wanna see if it's user friendly. We don't wanna discourage anybody from participating in the community and asking things, you know, like that. And the second part of my question...
Anybody can come in and look at anything that, you know, readily available. It's just, you know, making copies, we do charge for the copying cost, for what 35 cents a copy. So all those kind of charges are reviewed periodically, but a board of selectmen will make adjustments.
So that's the other part. So any, it doesn't matter what information you're looking for, if it comes in the form of a photocopy, you're gonna pay for that page. And everybody gets charged, yeah?
Yeah. If they come into the office and wanna, you know, request information.
Okay.
I know I've given you pages that I've had right here on occasion.
Right, you have.
Might've been one or three pages.
And that's good. And how about if you get a handout at one of these meetings? Like if Keith hands out some papers or, you know...
We don't charge you for that. We don't charge you for that. At the start of the meeting, we usually have them set up over there.
Anything else under public to speak? Yes?
There's one message to what Mark said. It's been the town's policy forever that if you had paperwork that involved something that somebody was gonna do to volunteer their time for the town, they usually gave it to them for free. We didn't charge them for it. I wasn't, the other thing I had is if you get calls on Streetlights, I found them all and marked them down and I went online and made a request for them. So then hopefully the next week they should get fixed.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Marky, you were here four meetings ago, made that same statement that you had submitted a request.
And they fixed them?
Except for the one on Cary Road, the one, two on Cary Road?
Those have gone out since.
I've called them. I've reported the same ones.
Okay, thank you.
Well, 13 and 15.
Did you get the ones on Mingaloo?
Yep.
Okay.
When I checked the other night, the ones on Mingaloo were all on. There's two on Hunt Cove Line and two on North Camps Road.
You could down North Camps Road. Okay, good. Anything else under public to speak? Super, thank you. We have minutes from the planning board, November 13th, regular meeting. Any comments on that? Allen Street reconstruction, water main replacement, just an FOI, construction meeting on December 6th. Any comments, questions? Consent items. We had a public hearing a little bit ago for the general assistance appendices that we have to move on accepting as presented.
I'll make a motion to adopt the MMA model ordinance GA appendices A through D and appendix H. Do I have to state the dates? October 1st for the period beginning October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020?
Questions? All favor? Ticket license, Rangeley Region Health and Wellness Benefit Concert.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the application for Rangeley Region Health and Wellness Partnership for the date of 7/25/2020 from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. for their benefit concert fundraiser.
Second.
Thank you. I know everything's done in there. Any questions from the board? All favor? Thank you. Ranger Lake Snowdew, event permit. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Ranger Lake Snowmobile Club event permitted application for January 25th, 2020 from 6:00 to 6:30 for the snowmobile parade.
Moved and seconded? You're shaking your head. Is this...
No, I...
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
Would you like to know what the theme is?
What's that?
Would you like to know what the theme is?
We have a theme?
Disney on Snow Machines.
Oh, cool.
Okay. Mickey, Benny, and Donald?
Cool. Just have this picture of Mickey's ears flapping going down the street and Donald's tongue about nine miles behind him. Thank you, Linda. Rangeley Health and Wellness Benefit Concert, event permit.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Rangeley Health and Wellness Event Permit Application for 7/25/2020.
Questions? All set? Rangeley Skating Club, Chamber of Commerce, Winter Palooza, event permit.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Rangeley Skating Club, Ranger Lakes Chamber of Commerce, Winter Palooza for February 16th, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Second.
Thank you. Anything? You all set? All favor? Thank you. Main Forestry Museum Parade.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the event permit application for the Main Forestry Museum for a parade down Main Street on July 18th, 2020 from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00.
Thank you. Nice to see them coming earlier to get ahead of it all. All favor? Thank you. Vendor's license, Rangeley Health and Wellness. Is there, you guys got a restaurant up there? I mean, you've got a lot of roll. Health and Wellness Vendor's License.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the vendor's license for the Rangeley Health and Wellness Museum. Museum. Navy Health and Wellness for...
For 2020, this season.
For the whole year?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, for 2020, sorry. I'm looking for a date and I don't see one. But there it is.
Moved and seconded? Any questions? All favor? Thank you. Fast along to everybody. I can speak for all of us when I say this. We appreciate all the hard work you do. Truly do.
We do it for the community as much as possible.
Certainly do. You certainly do.
So it sounds like the Flower Museum Parade's gonna be a different date.
It is.
Perfect. Okay. Request for appointments. Request to be on the budget committee from Shelley Lowe. Need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Shelley Lowe's request for deployment to the budget committee.
Second.
Four. All in favor? Thank you. We have a request from Shelley Lowe to be on the Rangeley Region Economic Committee. Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint her. I need a second.
Just a second.
I need a third. Okay, all in favor? Moving along. Town Office Reserve. Hang on, just let me get to that here. The request is for upgrade to computers Windows 10 for $6,188.61. Ongoing upgrades, correct, John?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess our computers are destined to not work anymore shortly, Windows 10 and Windows 11. So we've got some of them done. I think these two, fire department and police department are included in that. Probably half of that car. And Trio upgrade for Windows 10, 2649. So we need authority to take the $6,188 out of the reserve account to the town office.
Pretty pro motion.
I make a motion that we approve the amount of $6,188.61 out of the town office reserve account for required computer upgrades.
Any questions? I have one. Are we sure that all of the computers that this is gonna be fed into are capable of handling?
I can actually speak to that since it affects fire and police, if you don't mind. The computers that, the police department has two computers and I have one. They're refurbished. They will not accept Windows 10 upgrades. So in the quote that we've given you are for the new computer tower and software that goes with it. Come January 14th, the police chief and I will not be able to log in unless we upgrade Windows 10 to IMC, which is dispatch, and I have a NIFERS, which is a national fire reporting database. So it's for the complete, it's for a monitor, tower, keyboard, and Windows.
What about town office?
Your computers can be... John might use them. Well, Exponent has told me it's, at this case, John basically uses his computer for email. He should be fine until the next budget season. And everyone else, Tyson, but vital records and Trio and all of that, it's the same reasons that it's, this is just, everybody who uses computers is gonna feel this.
Oh, yeah?
So to Windows 10.
Yep. Any other questions? Lasting this item is the warrant for special town meeting. It's designed, like every other warrant that you've all seen, and this will be a secret ballot as usual. The first article is to choose a moderator, second article, so the town be authorized to enter into one or more agreements providing for reconstruction, repair, renovation, improvement of roads owned by and located within the town and be authorized to borrow on behalf of the town if some not to exceed $3 million. On such terms as the selectmen determine are necessary and proper pursuant to the main revised statutes, et cetera, et cetera, and other applicable main laws, including the interest rate and principal payment dates for the purpose of paying all or a portion of the cost of reconstruction, repairing, renovating, improving roads owned by and located within the town of Rangeley. The numbers underneath are as follows. Bond principal outstanding unpaid is $2 million. Excuse me, that's not correct. I'm not assuming that's $2 million, is it?
Yeah, $2,167,000.
All right. Bond principal authorized and issued, expected to be issued, is $1,186,000. Bond principal authorized to be issued if the two are approved above this $3 million total for...
No, $3 million additional on...
It's $3 million, excuse me, well, all right, it's $3 million. That's addition for a total of $6,353,448. B, out of this same thing, is cost, an estimated maximum interest rate of 4.05 with an estimated maximum term of 10 years. The estimated cost of the new bond will be as follows. Total bond principal, $3 million. Estimated interest, $660,199.40. Estimated debt service, $3,666,199.40. Estimated annual payments, $366,019.96 fiscal year. runs from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-eight. Uh, three hundred and sixty-six, excuse me, three hundred and sixty-six nineteen seventy-six for fiscal year two thousand twenty-nine. Just a little difference there. validity, the new bond will be valid if they are authorized by our majority of the voters voting at town meeting. The approval of the voters will not be affected by any errors or other variances from any estimated provided by paragraph B of this statement. Submitted by Rebecca Carmichael. Article three, shall the town, shall the Board of Selectmen be authorized to purchase a parcel of land containing three point four six seven acres, more or less situated at ten Depot Street, Rangelay, Maine, and shown on the town's tax map as map thirty-eight, lot thirteen, for the price of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, paid an annual installment of twenty-five thousand dollars for ten years? And I love this one. A person who is not registered as a voter may not vote. Glad we have that. And then we need to sign this after. Are there any questions on this warrant? How about from the board? All right, all in favor?
Do we have a motion?
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Need a motion, we need a... Well, we all said yes, so I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the special town meeting warrant for eighth of January, twenty-twenty, eight a.m. to eight p.m.
Second.
All in favor? I have some correspondence from, a thank you to the police chief, I'm not gonna read it. There's some things in there that's not appropriate for public consumption, but we do have a thank you note. Is, is, is that fair, John? There's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, there's some things in there that would divulge the situation, I just, I'm not comfortable reading it.
But, you know, I have...
Yeah, look, read the next line below it.
They blacked out here, so...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna read it. Next is all business. Rangelay Health Ride Policy, second reading and adoption. Does anybody have any questions? This has been made available for a while. Please don't ask me to read the whole bloody thing. I do wanna state, though, that I've had a couple of comments about this, this entire... First of all, thank you to Tracy for putting this together. Well done, very well done. Paul Newt deserves the town's gratitude as well. Is now orchestrated a little bit differently than it ever has been, and certainly we have something to work from as we go forward in the future here. Yes, Mark?
I just have a comment. I think it's a real good document. On the attachment sheet, the Coordinated Accidents Investigative Report, I didn't know if, every place where it said collision, if accident might be a better word, because all accidents aren't necessarily collisions. But, you know, I don't...
Unless it was on purpose.
I had something to add on that same sheet. Not directly with the collision wording, but, uh, let's see. Where it says, what, what did our driver do or failed to do that caused involvement in this collision? It seems like it's making it our drivers fall off the get-go, the way it's worded. I mean, our, our drivers involved in collision may not have done or failed to do anything. I don't know what the proper wording is, and maybe you all like the wording, but it just seemed like it it probably started personally with bust off the back.
I, I just don't think I'm concerned about is that the town adopt a special policy for investigating accidents when they already have the policy to investigate accidents now. Why wouldn't it just fall under an accident involving a town vehicle that would be covered under the town's policy of investigating them all the same? Why do you need to specifically lay out all the questions that have to be asked when an investigation is done?
Just to put this out here, I had actually gotten this form from MMA, our insurance company, so, I mean, we could...
So maybe it's town policy already, is what I'm saying, maybe you use this form, if you use this form for that, then...
Of course, it's quite that comprehensive, but we do use a very similar form, I guess, next to each other to compare.
So that everybody's treated the same that's operating a town vehicle?
Since we don't drive town vehicles, I, none of us, we've, the board's never seen an accident report, nor do we need to.
Well, this also says coordinator's accident investigative report. Not necessarily the person who is involved in the accident. I mean, obviously you're gonna put it on here, but...
I'm not gonna try to get my fingers dirty in this thing, but I think the, the intent of this thing originally was to give the coordinator a roadmap on what to follow. So if the roadmap is different in terms of what his or her, whoever's running it, certainly all the points are very valid, all the way across the board, but...
And in the, in the case of a claim, so what would happen is the, the individuals are involved in it and the department head would, or in this instance, the coordinator would fill out this form, give it to me, and then I translate the information into a more formal form to turn it to MMA. So this is, this is information gathering on our end. And this gets filed in a binder in my office and locked away, and, and then the rest of it's handled to the, the MMA.
This stays with the rat and file.
Exactly, yeah.
Doesn't go...
I mean, this could prove...
Do you have heartburn over the way this is done, I mean, in terms of procedural within the town office, or, or just leave it as...
No, I'm just saying that everybody should be treated the same, so that if you already have a policy in place to investigate accidents, but this may have to do with also somebody slips and falls, or something happens to one of the clients, and they basically want to sue the town or something for some negligence, I would assume that this, he would have to, or somebody, if, if he's the one named in the negligence, he doesn't wanna be the one investigating, but the town manager should think about it. I would think the town manager would oversee any investigation that the coordinator would do. It would be, because the coordinator, essentially, day-to-day stuff comes under the, I mean, he would come under his, as far as direction, right, town manager?
I haven't had any dealing with him except when he's come in here, but now that we have a policy, we'll have some direction.
He's responsible for you, though, right?
Even though he's a volunteer, he's considered a town employee.
Right.
In regards to Mark's point about collision, you said this was a form that you followed?
Yeah, I got that, I got this specifically from MMA, I was away. Again, this, this form never leaves my office, it's locked up with the, the other, but I can change the wording to however you want it, that's... It does say it's an accident investigation report. As opposed to a collision report.
But I do, yeah, you're right, that's true.
You had your hand up, Mark? Okay. Anything else on this one? I mean, tell me, you wanna change some of these things, or leave it as submitted?
I think this form, they're gonna have to fill out more than just this form if they do that for an accident.
Well, again, this, I take this information and put it to the, our insurance company's official form, and they, they take care of it from there.
It's probably considered as one of the tools that they use to do an investigation, they make the others.
Agreed.
It's a way that their coordinator gather information, basically.
Agreed.
I think this is fine.
All right, we've got this on the table, second reading, heard input, you wanna move it, or do you wanna change it, go for a third reading? Let's see.
I'd like, I'd like to change that wording, I don't, I really don't like where it says, what did our driver do or failed to do? I'd like a, a more general question. In what way, if any, was our driver, driver involved in this incident? Something to that effect.
You can move to approve it, I can pending that change also, so we don't have to go through a second reading or a third reading.
Trish, did you get his suggestion for change?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else? Move it as it meant, uh, as it's amended.
Yeah, unless there's something else.
Excuse me?
Unless there's something else in here, but...
I need a second.
Oh, second.
I moved it as amended.
Yeah, I didn't know you were moving, yeah, okay. Your motion, my second.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor? Thank you. John, force account explanation.
Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
On this last thing, you know, you stated that it's been out there for a while, but I'd just like to point out, cost me a dollar seventy-five to have a copy that I could take home and read.
Thank you. Force account explanation, John?
Yeah, you discussed the last meeting for me to get in touch with FAA to, we could use force account money or excess money for another project.
John, I'm gonna interrupt you one second. Mark, at the Thursday meeting that I attended for FOIA and all of the other acronyms that are associated with handing out documents, Maine Municipal Authority, who put that on, Maine Municipal? All right. They stressed that, and this, I asked one question, I asked two questions during the course of the, of the symposium I was at. One of them was revolving around this one here. MMA is, is requesting municipalities move to paperless and wireless, and recognizing there are some people who don't have computers and some people who don't like using computers, there's a big long discussion about recording computer documents that are generated for so on and so forth, but in terms of paper, they were adamant. If you get in the policy of handing it out, it's gonna cost you a lot of money. Have policies in place, follow the MMA rules and follow state legislate, legislation rules. Just wanna make sure that you knew that there's nobody that's being singled out. And there is a direction that they're taking, and they're, they're not forcing towns, but they're requesting them in very strenuous language.
Can you request it in a PDF and email it to you for free?
Yes.
Correct. Correct. I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
So, I, I wasn't here when all this came about with the force account, so I wanted to check first that our engineer guy grew well, 'cause he was involved in getting all that force account money approved to find out what his take on it was, and Cindy had emailed me with, uh, wanted to make sure I knew exactly what it was she was requesting from our last meeting, so I sent a copy of that to Guy Gruell, and I said, I received this form from Cindy, so there would be no misunderstanding about her questions, could you comment and get back to me with your take on the use of the funds, thank you. So I did get the response back, and he has spent a lot of time talking with the FAA official, and pretty much tells us that, according to Jorge Jorge, however you pronounce that.
George Pantelli.
Pantelli. Wanted me to share this with you, but he, he was saying, guy that you could use FAA, made it very clear, when I, when Guy spoke to him, that the town can either keep the excess funds or use it solely for the airport, or they can return the unused balance. So, uh, they also made it clear that the fine print within the grant documents would make it unlawful to use the excess funds for anything other than the airport. So I haven't got in touch with them yet, but if you want me to continue to call FAA now that I have at least some better information from Guy who was involved in this from the beginning and who's talked to these people. It seems pretty clear that you have to use airport funds for airport or you lose the funds.
Okay.
We're talking, uh, over a million dollars, so... Six hundred and thirty-one thousand is equivalent to our five percent. Originally, it was five hundred forty-seven thousand, based on the original estimate. I mean, that's very end, and then the fact that they funded a hundred percent, well, our five percent, state's five percent. You know, now the five percent of, uh, I don't know, it almost sounds like the FAA is, is, uh, adding that to the totals of their hundred percent, if they were calculating that at the ninety percent, then that would give us more money, which it did. It went from five seventy-four to six hundred thirty-one thousand, so... The four hundred some thousand that we received from the contractor after the five percent, I mean, that's ours to do what we want with. So that's, you know, I haven't got that far yet, and, um, I have a better understanding reading what Guy had to say about how that all started.
Yeah, I, I, I talked with John about, about the email that the questions were supposed to go to Luke Garrison, because that was the letter that was presented to us, you know, as far as our initial, our initial acknowledgement letter for the force account when we had to present, when we had to come up with five percent of the runway extension project, so I I don't, um, well, like I told, it's, we've discussed this publicly, you know, Guy Gruell tried to get us to spend almost nineteen thousand dollars on an airport feasibility study that we didn't need. And that has left a bad taste in my mouth. When we've got someone who is, um, working for, is a contractor for the town of Rangelay. So I, um, I don't take much stock in his opinion because of that. And, and that's just something that factually happened, that wasn't my own personal experience. This all played out publicly over the course of five months of him trying to get us to fund a nineteen thousand dollar feasibility study. So I think if, like I said, and I, like I said in that email, I mean, there's no rush, it's a lot of money, I mean, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and we've got three million dollars in roads, I, um, so I would just ask if the opportunity comes up. Don't go out of your way, if the opportunity comes up to have a discussion with someone who is removed from and has, and has an objective opinion, I would ask you to do that.
Well, I don't have any problem calling this George Pantelli, because if he...
He's, he's grant comply, I mean, he...
But if he said, if, if he said in the fine print of the documents, said very clearly, maybe he could point you in that direction, 'cause I haven't read them, so...
I, I, I don't, I don't want you to talk to George Pantelli, I mean, what I, what I, what we asked for was in the last meeting, was for Luke Garrison to expand in his letter, and I know you're, you feel cautioned about, and, and I get that. But we have another consultant.
Are you talking about StanTech?
StanTech.
Yeah, I think D and K, they, they were obligation to us ends December thirty-fourth.
That, I would just, sorry, my, my experience is colored with past practice.
So did you honestly expect the answer to be different? I mean, you know from being on board to being involved in municipal stuff that most of the time, grant money's a lot, grant money's for what it's for, we all wanna take it, use it for other things, water, electric, we wanna put a set of pipe, put some pipes up on another road, and they're like, nah, it's gotta be connected to this road. Come out of this money, so what I'm asking is,
Yeah.
Are you asking this question more because of the bad taste, whether it's warranted or not, or are you asking, 'cause you honestly think you're gonna get a different answer?
I, um, this isn't, they bought materials from the town of Rangelay, and I think that is, um, and I'm not echoing anything different than others that have sat on the board previously have, have, have echoed, so in order for them to expand the runway, they... So, in order for them to expand the runway, they needed raw materials to purchase from somewhere. And there was Chick Hill, owned by the inhabitants of the town of Rangel. So I just... I, I'm not satisfied with this answer, is what I'm saying.
So would a call to the FAA solve it?
I am someone who is... Not Guy Ruell.
Donnie? How do you feel?
Yeah, I'll email Stan Tech myself.
No, no, I'll just...
I mean, it's the same.
But a call to the FAA would clarify for you, wouldn't it?
I don't wanna, I understand, I don't wanna put, it looks like, you know, you know, Guy Ruell has already done that on our behalf.
That's okay.
And even though I'd rather he hadn't, but I understand John's predicament that, you know, not wanting to harp on them with a matter that just...
Concerned, because we got an initial one from FAA explanation, and then this one here with Guy into, you know, calling him, because he knows him. I don't know any of the FAA people, so I don't have a ton to give you an idea about the reason.
I think, I think the problem is, is when this was first brought up, when you first, when this was first brought to the board's attention last month, that, you know, with the six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar figure, et cetera, the initial, that had to be allocated to the airport reserve account. The initial request was, can you just get, can you just get a follow-up opinion? Because the grant funding had changed. So then, that was circumvented, we didn't get a direct opinion. We got a letter, an opinion from a town employee with an old letter. I mean, this has just been danced around. I just asked a simple question, and I've gotten, anyway, I'm frustrated, and I didn't think it was that hard.
I don't necessarily share John's opinion regarding the sensitivities of the FAA. So if this board wants clarification from someone at the FAA, I don't think any of that's unreasonable. Donnie, how do you feel?
I would go along with that.
Ethan?
I'm kinda on Cindy's side.
Yeah, let's just make sure that when the question gets asked, it's asked however the board wants it to be asked, so it can be asked, answered, and we can do something else.
Yeah.
Yep, I don't see any reason we can't trust John to do just that.
Yeah, Cindy's, you know, email very clearly stated what she's looking for.
I don't know.
In fact, I... First sentence is, one, Cindy is correct regarding the initial need to use force account to fund the five percent. They negotiated a cost per yard way back to the five percent dollar amount, so...
So, yeah, again, yeah, it's...
But that was a long time...
The way I hear it, John, is Cindy wants to make sure that the FAA is... We're understanding the FAA's position that the money that's in the forced account is not to be used for anything other than the airport.
So, alright, so let me just backtrack a little bit more. Alright, the force account was set up for our five percent. Is it even a forced account? Does it, is it even the same thing now? We didn't need to contribute our five percent?
Right, 'cause they funded it a hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
But caveat is, they agreed to pay us what we would have had to pay with our five percent.
But the thing of it is, John...
Put money in the town of Rangel's bank.
They had to buy the materials from somewhere.
And all that value of that material, the money, is in our bank in terms of the airport reserve fund.
Our material.
Any future projects forever can be paid for.
I guess, so what I'm asking is, are we even comparing the same thing?
I don't know, I think I am, but I might not be, I don't know. I mean, I understood your email today, and it looked very clear to me.
Is it even, I mean, is it even a forced account?
I don't know. It's called a forced account, because it was set up to handle our five percent.
Exactly. That is my point.
But how...
Thank you, just better.
How often has any grant agency given, you know, towns, you know, their share?
They didn't, yeah, they didn't, they didn't give us anything, though. They bought materials from us, and that's my sticking point.
No, they did, they gave us a hundred percent funding.
Yes, yes, this doesn't have...
But they also saved money by buying ours, rather than having to ruck it in. So, to me, that's like...
They paid us for our materials, anyway, it's like...
That's right.
First thing was six hundred some thousand, and then when that met our five percent, the rest of it is ours to do anything with what we need to be able to do any project. So that's my understanding.
And would, would they have funded it a hundred percent if we didn't give them, we didn't sell them the gravel?
No, we have gotten a hundred percent funding if, if the company, Ruell's company didn't go and get it for us. Dennis, head of Santa.
I think it's just the amount of words are very confusing. I am very concerned about it. In the beginning, our five percent was gonna be the dirt. Then we got a grant to cover that. In that grant, there was no stipulation that said, if we contribute dirt, that we had to use...
There is.
So once our, our percentage of the job was covered by that grant, then the dirt we sold is our dirt. And the townspeople should have the right to spend the money wherever they want, because it was not part of that. We just sold dirt to the airport, to the FAA. Because they gave us that grant, that took out our five percent contribution. Now they shouldn't be able to tell us how to use our money.
That's where I'm getting, that's...
I totally agree with that.
At the last meeting, the majority of you folks voted to have John contact this Luke Garrison, because he was the one that set up the original force account, and the information you had was provided by him. So, I would suggest that you follow that track and speak to the Luke Garrison. If he set it up the first time, he'd know way better than this Jorge, whatever his name is. He gave us a training session on grant compliance and stuff, but he doesn't have anything to do with the numbers or any of that stuff. He's just a...
Gotcha.
In a different thing, so he's not really the best guy to ask, I don't think. And then, I think Guy Ruell may have a little conflict of interest in wanting that six hundred thousand to be in the airport account, because his property management plan that they drew up for us has him on action plan, where he wants the town to build a hangar with money coming from the airport fund, you know, like a hundred and seventy-five, owned by the town and leased out to somebody, and all these other improvements, and the money's all coming from this six hundred thousand. And he's got some language in there that stipulates that if you accept this property management plan, that his company gets all the engineering and administration work that goes with it. You know, so he definitely has vested interest in trying to keep that money in the account. And, but I think the town's in danger of not getting the proper clarification of, if Dennis is correct with his thing, that that money belongs to the town, that the town could be in danger of misappropriating six hundred thousand dollars of money that belongs to the townspeople of Rangel. You know, and you wanna, so you wanna be careful with that kinda stuff.
Hold on, something new, Dennis?
No, same thing, but I just understand, you can solve this probably another way. And that is, you've got this six hundred thousand dollars. You can lot that to cover airport operations for the next five or ten years and reduce the budget by that amount of money. And that's gonna still save the taxpayers one way or the other. That way, you're spending it on airport stuff.
I've already brought that up to John. That, yeah, that...
I mean, that's the way to do it, if they're gonna stipulate you can use it at the airport.
Well, it's, when Jim Carrigan was on the board, he had mentioned that that's the way they used to do it at the airport. The highway foreman would delineate hours and, and time, you know, or expenses, you know, to the airport and make sure that those expenses were covered by the airport.
We could reimburse ourselves for the...
We can. We've talked about that at the past too, that was brought up in many of the public hearings as well too. So a call to Luke Garrison would solve this issue, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
The only tricky thing is, is if you...
Hold on, Dennis, hold on please, hang on.
Yes, I don't, yes, that's, that's what we discussed at the last meeting.
And this you wrote to John is exactly perfect.
Okay.
And it lays it out, it's not a mile long, and...
Gotcha.
Please go.
Gotcha.
Here's only one and all.
Call to Luke Garrison?
Sure.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I mean, interrupt, I wanna keep her going. Okay? We'll get some clarification.
The only thing that we have to watch out for is that if you use that money at the airport, that the taxpayers get the benefit of you reducing the budget at the airport. I mean, you can't just put the money in there and not reduce that budget. The taxpayers need to see your, need to enjoy that six hundred thousand dollars.
Can I just, what document were you talking about? What document were you talking about as far as this, the conflict of interest and...
Yep, you folks voted to give to our king a contract for an airport property management plan. And the basis for it was, Guy Ruell and the airport manager said that leases weren't consistent with each other, and the rates weren't uniform and all of that. And so, they wanted to do that, plus look ahead at the hangar layout thing. Someone was requesting a hangar, this Alex Wegman guy and stuff, so it seemed like a timely thing to do that, but... So we got a copy of that to review. Well, we, she called for a meeting, but there was no quarrel. That was in, in November, and so... I, I have, I have a copy, there were only three of us here, and so there was no meeting.
So, just a second, so that's, you're referring to this airport property management plan? So it's nothing, nothing we've seen?
No, you, no, you haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, it was a little confusing, you said that we'd seen it and...
No, you haven't seen it yet. The Air Law Commission hasn't even discussed it, but some members have. But I was, I've been reading through, and that was...
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna stop that one, because we haven't seen it, so we're not gonna talk about that right now.
Okay.
Okay. Next up. Next up, thank you everyone for that. Where are we here? Fire Department, heavy rescue, request to accept offer. Wanna tell us about it?
Yeah, we, Fire Department's received an offer of fifteen thousand for the nineteen eighty-eight heavy rescue that we have. Few select meetings ago, I asked if we could put it out for sale. We put it out at nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, received a fair offer of fifteen thousand, we'd like to accept that. And as a second point to that, with approval of the select board, likely use five thousand of those funds before they go into the reserve for fittings for the, for heavy rescue that's coming, to attach our equipment to, so it don't take it out of our budget. That's it.
I'm gonna let Donnie take over from this point forward for this one, 'cause my son has the offer for it, so I'm not gonna be part of this.
Okay. I wanna be Torian Sperrit here. Any questions?
So, do we need a separate motion to accept the...
Probably needs to be a dual motion, I would think. They accept the offer, then there were a motion to...
And a second motion to allocate?
Use five thousand of the fifteen thousand.
Alright. Alright, so I'll make a motion that we accept the offer of fifteen thousand dollars for the nineteen eighty-eight Volvo heavy rescue vehicle.
Second. More discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Now you need one for the five thousand?
We put the whole five thousand in the reserve fund, and then include, take it from the reserve fund, the five thousand, for the other vehicle. They're two separate vehicles.
Okay. So, so we'd just be allocating the ten thousand to the... No, I mean, I'm sorry.
Fifteen thousand to the reserve fund, and then five thousand to come out of the reserve fund from that.
Alright, so two more motions. Just wanna get it right.
You just made one motion.
Yes, to accept.
Except the fifteen. So the, this is like a police car when you take it out of your capital fund. You gotta buy it a screen or lights, or, you know, to get it ready for its job.
Yeah.
And that's all inclusive and cost-effective.
I get that, I just wanna make the right motion for the money.
By accepting it, we automatically put it in the reserve?
Oh, we did.
I believe so, yes.
I'd say to authorize five thousand from the reserve fund to go toward the new vehicle.
But by accepting it, it automatically, we don't have to make another thing to put it in the reserve, it just goes to the reserve.
Yes.
That's my point.
Okay, yeah.
So now we just need the five thousand dollars.
Okay, so I need a motion for five thousand to come out of their reserve.
I'll make a motion that we take five thousand dollars out of the Fire Department reserve account to purchase additional miscellaneous equipment for the new KME heavy rescue.
Second.
All in favor? New business, amendment to the personnel policy, Article twelve, first reading, stand by, one sec. Want me to read the whole thing? It's a health insurance issue, non-bargaining unit employees. There's some words that are changed out of the policy for all regular, and then were taken out on non-using, full-time employees. All the rest of it stays the same. Correct?
Everything that's underlined is additional. You don't need to read it.
Oh, that's additional, underlined as additional.
Does he need to read it?
Okay.
Okay. Take a deep breath.
Here we go.
It has to do with employees who can be on a spouse's plan, or all people like me be on Medicare. You know, it provides...
Easy, John.
This doesn't apply to me, 'cause I'm on the health insurance, but it allows for a payment of two thousand dollars that an employee could apply toward any one of these five things. It's mostly to do with the health reimbursement account to add to that. So if an employee's on a different plan, it saves the town, if it's a family plan, it would save the town over twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. And a single plan would save us about ten and twelve thousand.
I don't have the numbers.
I don't have the numbers.
Part my head, it's hard to read.
But we have a couple of employees that, you know, may be eligible now that they recently got married to go on a spouse's plan, which would save us some money.
Okay.
So this is incentive, I know in the town of Mexico, we had an incentive, if you can be on another plan, we'll pay you fifteen hundred dollars twice a year, seven fifty each half a year. And that was considered like income when we were telling them. Saved the town a lot of money, so I had three or four employees that could go on a spouse's plan.
So Anna Lee drafted this?
She was involved in this, yeah. I think her and Karen or Rebecca, I'm not sure.
Is it, I should read this, correct?
You don't have to read it out.
Okay.
First reading needs that, you've read it.
We've all read it, yeah.
Okay.
'Cause all that matters, nothing.
Sometimes in the process, you gotta read it once to the taxpayer. Doesn't that be mine?
I'll make mine available, anybody here? Next up. Fire Department, grant acceptance. From Michael Bacon, it says, "Rangel Fire Rescue has received a grant from the Stephen King Foundation in the amount of ten thousand dollars." This grant, what a, that's not right. You asked us to vote out five thousand dollars, and then you get a grant for ten. You're double-dipping there, big guy. and then you get a grant for ten, you're double dipping there, big guy.
Danny, is it for that?
This grant is to provide high visibility winter jacket for twenty of our firefighters. Those are expensive jackets. With permission, Ransley Fire would like to accept this grant. I move we accept the grant.
Second.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. Fire Department requests to sell equipment.
Last item, would you like me to speak on it? We, last year, the select board.
No, I'll do it, no, I'm kidding with you.
Last year, the select board voted to allow us to move a snowmobile over from the sewer department to the fire department, which allows us to remove our, one of our oldest sleds. It's a nineteen eighty-eight Yamaha Venture seven hundred.
Ninety-eight.
Excuse me?
Ninety-eight.
Excuse me, did I say nineteen eighty-eight? Stuck on the Volvo, I'm sorry. Nineteen ninety-eight Yamaha Venture. The current value that I could find was six hundred and seventy dollars, that's in good condition. It's in rough condition, we've had an offer for five hundred dollars. But I don't know if it's exactly okay to allow me to put that out to purchase, or does it need to go out to bid? How should we proceed with that? We received it in a, as a donation on March eighth, twenty-ten. So I'm looking for guidance on this one.
Personally, I, if I could speak on that?
Yep, go ahead.
Personally, I, I don't know. Chief?
Yes?
Personally, I don't think it's appropriate to accept an offer prematurely, even though it's a, it's not a big denomination of money. I think it's more appropriate, if you're gonna sell it out, right, to set a price and take offers on it. I think even, even something that's small sets kind of a precedent that we're selling something for five hundred bucks.
That's why we didn't accept the offer, because I wanted to make sure.
As far as the bid process, I'm not familiar, that was just my initial thought about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you haven't put it out there that it's even for sale? Does somebody happen to know about it and?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we need probably to put it out there. Cover ourselves.
Board has the authority to dispose of municipal property, that's why.
So essentially what you're asking us to do is accept the five hundred dollar offer if the chief wants to take it?
That's what the chief thinks we can get more, I don't know.
I think it's fair, considering it's six hundred and seventy dollars in good condition and it's been, it's old, it's aging, can't get parts for it anymore.
You're selling as is, where is?
As is, come and get it.
Yep, yes, Mark.
I agree with Ethan, I think you put, you know, that someone will say, how come I didn't get a chance to buy it or this and that? It just turns into a mess. You just take, put it out there, accept an offer on this, then you're in the clear. You know, you can't have anyone picking at you and stuff. And I think it's worth it to do it that way. If, you know, that five hundred is a, is a good offer and the guy puts it back in, we most likely end up with it anyway. So, but I think you save yourself a lot of hot burn by, you know, taking a policy like that and just going with it.
Well, chances are there wouldn't be a problem, but.
Well, if you wanna do it by policy, policy basically says you have two options. You can declare what you have as junk or you can put it out to bid. And many times we take old obsolete stuff that's no good and the selectmen declare that as junk and they take whatever offer they can get for it. That's another option.
So I'm looking for guidance.
Cause it costs a few bucks to go through the process of putting enough to bid and stuff like that. Still can be done.
I'd love to just get rid of it.
I entirely understand it, but I'm against taking the five hundred dollar offer.
Okay.
Just one principle. Thousand dollars best offer, I buy and sell a lot of snowmobiles. You get somewhere between five hundred and thousand dollars, I know it's a little bit of money.
I need a motion, what do you wanna do?
I make a motion that we put the nineteen ninety-eight Yamaha Venture seven hundred out to bid.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
So moved.
There you go.
Put a timeline on it, like two weeks or a week or something.
You know, I don't wanna see this again. John, isn't there a way we could just allow him to accept the bid? I mean, he can come back here, but if he gets a bid next week that sounds good and gets it off his roster, see you later.
You gotta give your copy of the policy.
The issue is disposing of property, so if you wanna, you know, your TR authority, if you wanna yield this one or that piece of equipment to the chief.
All right. On this particular sled, this Yamaha nineteen ninety-eight Venture seven hundred, my motion is to allow the chief to accept anything five hundred and over. No second? Okay. You know what to do now?
Yep.
Didn't go anywhere, yes Dennis?
If you look at your articles every year, you pass an article, it says to allow the selectmen to dispose of town-owned property. I told you how to do that.
Yep.
We have purchasing policy that tells the.
Yep, I understand completely. All right, next. Fire Department, excuse me, the TIP timeline, John?
The town voted fifteen thousand dollars at the request of the Downtown Committee in the budget last year and Daryl's been working with them and he's found two law firms that have experience with TIPS and one was estimated at fifteen thousand or twenty-five thousand. One was ten thousand, not to exceed ten thousand, with a realistic contingency not to exceed two thousand. Figure that one out.
Okay.
And then the other one is from our own attorney, which they would assign it to one of their members, would be Langsdorf, Stephen Langsdorf or Kristen Collins. It'd be Emily White that would take charge of this and be selected. Their estimate is proposed rate of two hundred dollars an hour, which is less than the current rate that we have. Estimated legal fees for the project would be in the range of nine thousand to thirteen thousand. Three proposals, Daryl wanted, would like to have been here, but he had another commitment that he made several months ago and he can be here at the next meeting, but one of the things they discussed with the committee they met this morning to put together a TIP, you put together all the properties in an area. You get the current values and then any improvements. You people would be able to give a tip out to anybody who came in or approached you, whether it's the, you know, for whatever reason, any improvement in money, any cost would not be part of the town's overall assessed value. So that, you know, that has, you know, if somebody was in a TIP district and put up a, you know, twenty million dollar facility, none of that gets added to the town's assessed value, so it affects the county taxes, it affects your, you know, revenue sharing, your identification, all that. So it also allows the person or the company who requests the district to take the money they invested the amount on top of the existing value is all that can be used. So you can actually, you know, companies that sent, the towns have sent back money to these companies that make it possible for them to make the improvements to their business. So you might be able to give them a five-year agreement and give them back like a hundred percent of their tax payment in the next year eighty, in the next year sixty. You can do anything you want to, you know, most businesses will make a request that's based on what they need to be able to do a project. So for instance, the ones that I did in Rumford was putting in a Best Western Hotel for bottom of the fall and they needed a tax exemption or, you know, for ten years. Well, towns can't give tax exemptions, but you can, in the agreement, they pay their taxes and then you can give them back their taxes on just the improvements, so they can pay for the improvements. And then, so for that example, we gave them a ten-year, hundred percent return on their taxes on, not on the existing value, but on the new value. So what happens is that at the end of the ten years, you know, of course the building is there and, you know, the payroll, the jobs, and then at the end of the ten years, the town gets to tax the full value of the property, the life of the property, so. These things have been around for twenty years or more. It's called, I can't, it's a specific name for, you know, returning the money, I can't think of it offhand. So anyway, several of our businesses have made substantial improvements to their properties within the last tax year, which was April first of twenty eighteen to April first of twenty nineteen.
We can capture that?
If we do it prior to April first of this year. So that's what Daryl's working on, so that some of those businesses can take advantage. It's a one-year and a real type of a thing, apparently that's what he's found out, so. If we can get it in and, you know, you'd have to, we're talking another special town meeting, unfortunately, I know you don't like those, but we could do it on the March third, special state election meeting day. The townspeople have to vote to create the TIP district. And then that district can sit there forever until somebody in the district comes in and says, we wanna make an improvement in the district. But what happens is all the captured new value, the town has designated that, designate that for capital improvements in that district. This would include, they're looking at us, the whole downtown district. Oh, here in Ransley, Ian and Acquasack. I mean, Acquasack, you had a couple of major projects and right down on Main Street, you had a couple of major projects that were done within this year. So that's what he's pursuing and he could certainly explain it a lot better than I can, cause I'm more familiar with it, but that's in a nutshell what he's working on. So I said, is there anything you'd like me to ask the board to approve? He says, well, if they wanted to, you know, approve a law firm to do this, then.
And he's recommended one?
He recommended one and, you know, but we also have our own town attorney, so, and they're interested as well, so. Decision that selectmen want to make, you know, they're hard decisions sometimes, so what are you gonna do? Yeah, he spoke very highly of the girl there that's.
Sullissa Tibbetts of Jensen Baird Gardner and Henry.
Yeah. So yeah, so we would, we would, I made sure he went in, the assessor was in this morning, so I made sure he went in and talked to him so that when he's getting the values of these properties, he's not getting, you know, if the assessors already updated those properties this year, which he may have, but if we can start with last year's values and all the dollars that increase the value based on the construction and renovations that were done would go into, would be part of the TIP and that money would be able to be, that extra tax dollar coming in from the improvements will eventually be restricted to economic development in the downtown in both districts.
Both districts.
Two separate areas within the TIP district.
Are you recommending tabling this thing till the next time and get some other descriptions?
We're getting closer to the March deadline, but it would be, it would be some time, I don't know, that's Trish's name, I would. It's not looking very happy, but.
No, the timeline wasn't included in the packet, so you can see that if you pick the March third, you would have to have public hearings in January, I have to have a ballot ready for January third and we don't have anything yet to explain to anybody what's going on. So just keep that in mind.
Yep.
Yeah, it's another one of these, you know, tight role, to try to follow the roles, you know, you gotta sometimes that quickly.
Well, I, yeah, well, I think, I mean, Daryl's point is to, is for us to capture the improvements that have been made over the last year, so it doesn't add to our town's value. Those differences get captured.
Or credit enhancement is the word I was thinking, so. Or it wouldn't allow the people who already spent the money to get a credit enhancement agreement within the TIP, which would return some of the tax dollars and pay for the improvements. That's what the whole thing's about. But the other thing, like you say, is it takes all that new value out of our.
Out of our assessed value.
For purposes of.
Yeah.
All the formulas that include the town's property value in determining.
Well, we could. I mean, we could, we could at least, you know, select an attorney and then decide.
And that's all he could hope for now and he'd be here at the next meeting to explain more due to what we can do. But you said January third you need to.
I have to have January thirtieth, I would have to have absentee ballots ready. You'd already have to have had a. And another town meeting in winter, yes.
Yeah, but that could be, you know, a referendum meeting again on March third, which we have to meet anyway, right?
No, that's a secret ballot, March third is primary, it's eight to eight voting.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be meeting.
Can't have a town article for that.
Yeah, you have a separate ballot, but it has to be ready, available as of June, January thirtieth, not March third.
So January thirtieth, I thought you said January third, which.
No, January thirtieth. That's the timeline the attorney provided in that email.
January sixth is the next selectmen's, I believe. Yeah, next selectmen's meeting, January sixth. You could either wait for that or you could, you know, pick an attorney to start looking into it. Daryl already said he was gonna put together the district and all of the lots and the values within the lots, which would assist the attorney in putting together the final package, cause it has to be presented to the State Department of Economic Community Development for their approval before it becomes an official TIP.
One public hearing, you said? Or two?
I think there's two on the timeline.
Two?
One before for public input and then one after, that, you know, like no changes to be made.
So that. So we could have, we could be discussing this to the next one, still give you just enough time to get that done in terms of us scheduling the public hearings and you'd be ready for absentee ballots, right?
I have to advertise for it fourteen days prior too, so you gotta give me the time to do that, so you'd be picking. Yeah, you'd be limited on the days you could have the public hearing when it become, yeah. But I have to have information to give to people when we're having a public hearing on too, just so you're aware.
Correct.
Which is what Daryl and this attorney would work on. So I'll make a motion to approve that the town contracted with Sullissa Tibbetts of Jensen Baird Gardner and Henry Law Firm, Law Firm, as recommended by Daryl Sterling.
Second.
Moved in second, is it?
Any more discussion? Any reason why you didn't wanna stay with the same town attorney that you were with?
Well, Daryl has worked on TIPS before, he like, seems to like her timeline as far as complying with statutory requirements and, you know, I would go with his recommendation.
Any other points? Any other points? I'll let this one go. Go ahead, Dennis.
Before you vote, I'm concerned about tax incremental financing of the district for Rangeley, especially for businesses that are already here and have already spent the money. Usually this tool is used to entice other businesses to come to town. When you take existing people that have already made their improvements and you give them a tax break, who do you think makes up those tax dollars? The people that don't have businesses, the workers and the other people of the towns. So to me, that's robbing them. I mean, if you've got a big company that wants to move to town and you want to give them a tax break, I think this is a good idea. But to go and be able to put in existing businesses that already made improvements, that's not fair. You can drop your tax base, you can drop your valuation. Somebody's gonna make up the dollars. And it's gonna be the people that don't have the businesses that are gonna be paying the tax.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think the tax formula is just based on the overall tax value as it's submitted to the state of Maine.
It doesn't make any difference. Every dollar less that business pays is a dollar more somebody else is gonna pay.
It's, it's value. It's not, it affects the money that we don't get because of our increased value over time.
No, it's not enough to make up.
Thank you.
Well, that's what people will be voting on at the, at the special town meeting. I mean, I think, you know, it's not, it's nothing for, it's, it's a part of the, it was a part of the downtown revitalization plan to research establishing TIF districts and we need to weigh out the pros and cons.
Chairman?
It's Sean.
I think Dennis's analysis is good, but the one thing that makes a lot of towns go this route is without the TIF, the new value isn't gonna be there. The development isn't gonna be there, because like in the case of that hotel going into ruin, I mean, ten years and no taxes on, I don't know, two, three, four million dollar project, it's a lot of money. So that, the developer can then use that money like it's money in the bank, and then the banks will agree to finance the rest of that cost, knowing that that tax money is available to put into the approval. So that, that's the real value behind the TIF, is to encourage new businesses to come in and invest money where otherwise they weren't, so.
Yeah, but Dennis's point, and I'm not gonna try to put words in his mouth, but you get a development that comes in like you're suggesting for that hotel, and the next thing you know, the fire chief comes to you, it's the town manager and the board selectman, well, look, we've gotta buy another truck. We're gonna have to pay for that out of the normal taxation to handle that increased development. If we, you know, because you just don't have the money to go pluck that out of thin air. And I'm also thinking.
But you could make, in that case, you could make a case that the new truck is a result of this new business and therefore that's a valid expenditure of money that's within the TIF money. You see what I mean? So that, yeah, you, you know, it depends on the situation, obviously. You wouldn't wanna just, you couldn't just use the money somewhere else in town. You could only use it in that district to improve that district.
I guess where I am right now, we're asking the town to come up with three million dollars for road projects, and we're having a special town meeting for that. That's gonna add to the tax base of everybody. And then if we were to burden them with a ten-year reduction, as the example that you used, not necessarily saying that's gonna apply to every case, I recognize that. But we're gonna have ten years of reduced taxation on a large property that requires greater services. So I understand that point completely. You had a question, though?
Two-part. Well, the first one is going along with Dennis. People that have already made the investment, built their businesses, they've got a plan. You know, we don't need to come in after the fact and give them a new tax break, you know, they've already got a business plan going. The other thing is, if I understood right, and I'm hearing impaired and my hearing aids are in the shop, and they were broken at the last meeting, so I've struggled to keep up. But if I understood, John, that this is targeted as part of the downtown revitalization stuff, I think that would, if, if the town goes with a, a TIF thing, I think it should include the industrial and the commercial zones as well, because it's not just downtown businesses we want to encourage here. You know, we need, we need a broader diversified.
Certainly good points to the public hearings if it gets that far.
Yeah.
Yep?
I know that doesn't help you with the grapple, and as far as the timetable goes, but.
No, Daryl mentioned the industrial zone, but he thought, you know, three, four years from now, when, you know, if everything's going good, then that's when you could spread the tips around. You do, you can do a number of tips up to a certain value within your community. Well, that, that gives Rangeley an edge on the number of tests, because you have a lot of value here. You know, I mean, you can, you have to be under, I don't know what the number is, but you have to be under the value for the, all the properties combined in a district, so I'm not sure what the value is. But Dennis will be, will have him on the agenda for the next meeting?
I think we should do that.
Daryl, he can be here the next meeting and explain all this stuff to you.
That's a small question.
Sounds like a plan.
So did you, you voted on the attorney?
We haven't.
Not yet. You just paid the motion?
Steve, I don't mind TIFs. I think they're a good tool. I just don't see in this case where you take existing businesses that already made improvements and give them a tax break. I see giving a tax break to a new business coming town that will provide jobs for the community and will be a benefit to the community. That way the taxpayers, general taxpayers, that's a good benefit to all of them. But just to fix up downtown Main Street on the backs of the other taxpayers and relieve it off the businesses, that's not fair, in terms of concern.
We have a motion. I prefer to table it, so that's my thoughts on it.
I would like to hear from Daryl.
Well, we've got two separate things going on. We've got an attorney selection, and then we've got his request for a date for a special town meeting, which we're holding off on. We'll wait to hear from him about that. He's already, he's already given us his suggestion for an attorney. It's the only thing I was gonna make a point on.
Yeah, I don't think we need an attorney till we get a better description, my thoughts.
We still have to vote.
Excuse me?
We still have to vote.
Thank you. You're doing a good job in my second here.
Just moving it along.
Yeah, don't you worry. I've been doing a good job with it. I wanna make sure everybody gets.
We can approve the, you know, the firm, and then he's coming in anyway, so.
So if we approve, if we approve the firm and he comes in, we can still decide now to deal with this if we don't want to, correct? Or no? What happens?
We can push out, they're proposing a timeline.
No, I understand.
And that's.
So if we approve this attorney, we're gonna start paying money and stuff's gonna happen. Right away, we're gonna hear from Daryl, be like, ah, we approved the attorney, but we don't need him. Can we, is that?
Okay, hold on, everyone.
John. What does that, what does that trigger?
Okay, hold on. Hold on.
Okay, we're holding on.
We approved this, we're giving them authorization to move with this lawyer firm to do this job.
Yeah, it sounded like he wanted the action so he could get her started on.
Not ready for that, in my opinion.
And then, yeah, you'd have to pay her.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, y'all, let's wait till.
Okay, so I need Cindy to.
I'll send my motion.
And your second. Okay, table is till the next one. We have for Daryl. Thank you all for your inputs. Town manager, first thing up is acceptance or discussion on Rebecca's.
He was gonna read the saddleback thing, or somebody was.
I have that under.
I have, I put it under.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. We have a letter here from, excuse me, we don't have a letter, we have. Thank you. Notice of filing a transfer of application with the Maine Land Use Planning Commission. Art Terrace Saddleback Company LLC, with a mailing address in Boylston Street, Chestnut Hill, Massachusetts, has filed an application for a permit with the Maine Land Use Planning Commission for the purpose of transferring ownership and responsibility regarding all active land use zoning approvals and development permits for Saddleback Land and Timber Cork and Saddleback Inc. to Art Terrace Saddleback Company LLC effective upon the recording of the deed from Saddleback Land and Timber Cork and Saddleback Inc. to Art Terrace Saddleback Company LLC, transferring approximately sixty-three hundred acres of land, including the Saddleback Mountain Ski Resort. The application was filed on December fifth of this year for public inspection of the two following Maine Land Use Planning Commission offices, Wilton and Augusta. Written comments for interested persons should be sent to the Maine Land Use Planning Commission. Addresses are identified above, which I'll make available with my copy, and must be received by the commission in a timely manner. Request for public hearing must be submitted in writing and must be received by the commission in a timely manner. Request for public hearing must clearly state the reasons why a public hearing is warranted on this application to transfer permits. For more information on how to request a public hearing or for other additional information, contact Maine Land Use Planning Commission staff at the offices above. Again, Wilton, nine thirty-two east, Route two East Wilton, and the Augusta office in, in the Harlow Building. If you have any questions for the applicant, Pete, please feel free to contact Tom Federley. He gives his address here and his phone number and his email. Good sign. All right, next up, town manager's report. I have a letter here. Please accept this letter as a formal notice of my resignation as airport manager effective December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Thank you, Rebecca Carmichael-Austin. Since she's appointed, we have to accept the resignation. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept the resignation of the, of Rebecca Carmichael-Austin as airport commissioner.
Second? Any questions, comments? All favor? Close? Next up, department head updates. We have, we have updates from Tom Willis. Also friends, sheep bacon available for everyone to take a peek. They've been busy, by the way. They have been busy. Calendar, two thousand twenty annual time meeting timeline. January sixth, all budgets are due to the town manager. Seventh to tenth, all department heads meet with the town manager. The twenty-seventh, budget board, budget to the Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee. March second, Board of Selectmen, final vote on warrants for public hearing. Any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you. Yes, John?
I know a comment was made at this budget meeting that the board didn't, I think there were some members were quite surprised that I put the budget, you know, the wage increase recommendations in without any discussion with the board, so if the board would like to have a meeting with me first before all this starts, so I can get your opinions on where you'd like to see the town go, I think that's a better way to do it.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I know I always presented my budget to the.
Understood.
Board in the past, so I didn't know you had.
Is it possible to grab a date?
Yeah, any time before January sixth. You wanna, we'd meet, well, we have a meeting on January sixth. You know, we could set a time either before or after the meeting to, like a work session if you want.
Sure.
What do you wanna do? It was good for all of you.
Are you gonna have anything preliminary prior to the sixth?
I want your input before I do anything. I mean, I could have.
We haven't gotten any budget summary sheets, quarterly budget summary sheets, to see what's been spent.
What's been spent, we could print them out.
Yeah, if you could print those, print those out for us, and that way we'll see how things are progressing.
So second, first, second, or third, what do you wanna do?
What do you mean? You don't wanna meet the sixth?
We could meet the sixth, like at five, just to, as a workshop prior to.
Okay. I thought probably we'd need more than an hour, but yeah, that's fine.
I'll be at four.
It's up to you. I mean, I'm considering work people, so.
I, well, I get out at four, so I can make time if I have to.
I'm not gonna be here anyway.
Four thirty?
Four thirty where's the?
Four thirty?
Four thirty. Could you, would it be possible?
Most things in the budget are out of our control anyway.
I understand.
Like some things are in our control. That's what you're looking at, mostly wages.
Tracy, could you send out an email to everyone just to remind us that we'll be here at four thirty that day? Thank you. Perfect. Anything else in that regard? John, else it? Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. January eighth, two thousand twenty, twenty twenty, special town meeting at eight AM to eight PM. That is gonna be a long town meeting, the voting that day.
That's here in this room.
Right here in this room, yeah. Eight to eight. We read the warrant articles, so you know what's coming up. Bond issue schedule. Do you have that in front of you? Any questions on that?
I just wanted you to see timelines. We have the town meeting on January eighth, so that if you decide you wanna go the bond issue route, you know, it's a different way of financing. If the town approves the money, then it would be if we use a local bank, but I think you have a cheaper rate, you know, with the bond bank, so. Just so you're aware that February twelfth is the day that applications need to be in, so.
And just for a reminder, how long does it take them to respond?
Well, here it is.
Yeah, okay.
Goes from February twelfth. March eighteenth, applications approval, preliminary options and loan guarantee agreements due from bond council of each borrower. Last date for signing school contracts and rates in place for a water district. Maine Municipal Bond Bank pricing, Maine Municipal Bond Bank sale meeting on the twenty-second of April. Final documents due from bond council May eleventh. May twentieth pre-closing and May twenty-first closing. Bond proceeds available after one PM.
Thank you.
And one more thing for town meeting update, but January twentieth is a holiday again. So we'll have to.
Martin Luther King Day.
You wanna go to the next Monday, the twenty-seventh? Or you wanna do a Tuesday, I guess, next to the twentieth?
Tuesday, my, my preference.
Yeah, mine too.
Tuesday good for you?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay. Tuesday good for you, Ethan? Assuming there's no basketball.
Tuesday will, um, will be a water district meeting for Keith and, I mean, and me, I don't have to be there. I could do a selectmen's meeting instead.
Good. Prefer not to go another week if we don't have to.
A weekday?
Tuesday.
On the twenty-first?
Nope. Yes, twenty-first.
Oh, okay, yeah, twenty-first is no conflict. I'm sorry, I have my dates mixed up. It's even better. It's even better.
Okay?
Yep.
Uh, we have notice here from, uh, a treasurer that, uh, received the payment from Sandy River Plantation for fire rescue, the Rat Van Septic Sludge fireworks in Town Park. Received the check, it was two hundred dollars less than what was requested. They spoke to Sandy River office, and I was informed that during the meeting, they only voted four hundred dollars for fireworks, four hundred dollars for the Town Park, we have consistently asked for five hundred dollars for both, uh, in the last ten years. I wanted to make you aware of this, uh, to reach to our request. FYI.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you wanna, now, somewhere down the line, the town assessed the values of what we sent for bills out for these types of programs, the total, on the next page, the total is forty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars that was built. That includes fire rescue, fireworks, Town Park, Rat Van, and Septic Sludge, so they lowered fireworks in Town Park. They didn't lower the rest of it.
Right.
Especially the fire rescue, forty-two thousand, seven seventeen, so that's a big amount. Now, it's up to you, if you wanna pursue some action.
They'll be back, their evaluation's going up next year.
Charge them double.
I'm sorry, what was that?
They said, they'll be back, they'll give you more money next year, their evaluation's going up. I think it's gonna be a new channel for saddlebags. That's in Sandy River.
Yeah, okay.
Should we send a letter?
It's this, it's this thing, we really, yeah, what would you like to do, I mean, we've been billing them based on their share of costs, you can't, you can't just, at the power company, you know, we couldn't say, oh, we're taking a five hundred dollars off our power bill, because that's what we voted.
That's what we voted.
Lower your bills, I don't know.
Yep.
Between a rock and a hotch花.
Mr. Borger?
No pickleball car improvements.
Hey, ever, no pickleball.
Well, think, think of the Town Park, I mean, we did ninety-five thousand dollars in making a little facility.
No rhyme or reason.
I, I just, I don't wanna see, see this be a trend. I mean, what are they gonna, what are they, just trying it out, it's like, let's see.
Does it give you any reason? No, just, just no, they just lowered the amount by two hundred dollars, a hundred and three.
Well, they picked the two things they could actually lower without affecting anything, too.
Mr. Borger?
Just a point there, the, uh, I know, the Town of Ransley provides a lot for the plantations, and I am unaware of any improvements that they raise money for to benefit the residents of the Town of Ransley, not Ranger Plantation, not Dallas Plantation, not Sandy River Plantation. None of them create things for that the residents of the Town of Ransley can use. And, you know, so it's kinda insulting for them to whittle you down on something like that. All their community members can use that Town Park for five hundred dollars a year, crazy, yeah, not to-
Well, I think Cindy needs to, is, is, her point's correct, we should write a letter, yes?
I do have an email going around to all the plantations to schedule a quarterly meeting. And we're looking at the second week of January, Harry. I don't know if you guys wanna discuss it, and if they show up, I don't know, just so you're aware, that that's, we're trying to figure out dates, and that's one thing I was gonna ask you tonight, what date's convenient for you to be a quarterly meeting? Because we haven't had one probably here.
And you said that's gonna be the first week of January?
They were looking at the second week of January, they said that was the convenient week. But, I mean, it doesn't, it's not set in stone, I've only had one plantation respond so far.
So, those, I mean, since Ransley's requesting this, why don't we give them two dates to choose from?
Okay, pick 'em.
Okay, seventh and eighth.
I won't be here for either one, but that's okay.
Well, we have a special town meeting the eighth.
January eighth, Trey, thank you.
So, maybe the week of Monday, the thir- Monday, the week of the thirteenth.
Yeah.
I will be back on the thirteenth later in the day.
Okay, so, how about, uh, what, what's that orange dot stand for on the fourteenth?
Sewer department.
So, is everybody, Tuesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, are we okay on those dates?
So far as I can tell, no.
Well-
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Tuesday or Wednesday, third, uh, fourteenth to fifteenth.
I can do either.
Okay.
Okay, did that help you?
Mm-huh.
Thank you. And, and-
But, did you mean the thirteenth, because the fourteenth has got the sewer commission, so they-
Nope, fourteenth to fifteenth, I mean.
Okay, no, they said they can meet down, and-
Yeah, a couple spots.
Yeah, they can meet down.
Okay.
Listen, I, John, I don't know how you're gonna form this letter and whatever, but I think Mark's spot on, I mean, this is the economic hub of the entire region, oh, nickel and dim, I see, cut it out.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's a bargain.
I mean, obviously, you're gonna use better superlatives than I just did, but the bottom line is that this is insulting.
The only thing I'm aware of that we increased was this solid waste rate, it's because of our increases, did we increase them?
Yeah.
No, not this year, because of the year behind us.
I'll come to you, Ethel.
Next year, there would be an increase in solid waste, transportation costs.
Oh, solid, yeah, sorry, solid.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
That's based on the increases we've suffered.
Yeah, I know.
Passing on to all the plantations around.
We have a fixed cost for the fireworks, and you divide it, and we take, you know, the lion's share of it. Yes, Ethel.
That, that was kinda my point, isn't this essentially their regional tax? I mean, all of us have to pay county tax, this is their regional tax, this isn't an optional payment.
Right.
Agree. Agree. I don't think-
I'd, I'd almost rather deal with it, with a letter and not at the quarterly meeting, just because it's-
It'll take up the whole meeting.
Well, we just don't, I, I don't want any us against them kinda thing happening at our quarterly meeting, so if we just handled, handled it one-on-one, um-
Gotcha, gotcha.
We're not seeing anyone out.
You should get it resolved before the meeting.
Yeah, that would be good.
I was in control of the meeting here. But willy-nilly, go-
What was that, Dennis, I missed you, Cooper.
I said, you probably should get it resolved, somebody should, town manager should make a call, you find out what the-
Yeah, he's got, we-
Somebody's upset over a few hundred bucks, I mean, we're only talking four hundred bucks, it's, it's more of, it's not the money, I think it's more of, they're, they're making a statement about something. And someone needs to deal with that, deal with it before the meeting, or the meeting's gonna fall off, and they're all gonna be there, you know?
Yep. More fireworks, Mark?
No. The Sandy River Plantation is in the top three for the lowest, uh, per mill rate in this entire state of Maine.
I think they can afford it.
Well, that's why.
Okay. Okay, we get through that, Select Board Communications, next, guy.
Who's that guy?
I haven't, this is the second time I've had to do this, and I like to-
Oh, my God, well, what good is it if you don't have it?
Look at the tip, five people.
No good if you don't get that.
All right, Select Board Communications, you got anything, Mark?
That's, that's Donnie.
Sorry, Donnie.
No.
Yeah, I wanna know, when you, when did the fire department have chance to have turkey dinner on the twenty-eighth?
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, seriously.
Don't, don't ask my wife. We were very busy, yes. There, there was a point that I had the fire guys hold the line, I ran home, put the turkey in, ran back out, we, we were very busy.
Thank you for-
Yeah, thank you, it was a tough day, we had-
It was a tough day, yeah.
It was.
With other things that happened, yeah.
Seven, eight, nine calls.
Yep. Ethan, do you have anything?
No.
All right, two things, one, under Select Board Communications, I was invited to come down and say hello to the kids at the firehouse for your Christmas party. If you haven't seen that, please put this in a paper, it's fabulous, you're doing a great job. I saw so many smile faces, and I gotta be honest with you, I thought I had a pretty good knowledge of who lived in my town, our town. I didn't know half of these people, it's unbelievable. Rug rats everywhere, it was great, you did a, you did a great job, okay, fabulous job, I, I- Please do, please do, it was just fabulous. I also received a letter thanking the Town of Ransley for their hundred-dollar domination to Maine Public, uh, radio, television, and online, um, thanking all of us here for our contribution, and, um, hope that we support them again in the future, which will be up to the taxpayers. That's all I have. Thank you for all your hard work, any motion to adjourn?
Executive session.
Oh, shoot, you all saw that, huh? I make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to MSRA Title One, Chapter thirteen, subsection one-
Thanks, everyone.
Subsection four oh five, discussion of confidential records, one, MRSA subsection four oh five, F.
Second.
Moved in second, it all favor?
Yeah.
So, well, thank you.
Have a good night. Good night, chief.
We, uh-